You are at much.
All right. Bennett County Commissioners are in session Tuesday, June 24th, and we're starting off with Indigent Services today. Go ahead, Chantel.
Chantel Laulu with Indigent Services. I have two cases for you this morning. First case is case number 20250038. I come to you with the recommendation of a denial pursuant to Idaho Code 313403. County is not the last resource for payment of this request as it appears that the deceased and applicant do own property that would be considered a resource for payment before the county at this time. For case number 20250039, recommendation of an approval is the applicant for cremation for expenses through Wilkes-First Home, an amount of $1,200. They do meet criteria to be eligible for assistance, and the applicant has agreed to a $25 a month repayment plan upon approval of this application.
Any questions on those?
No. Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that on number 20250038, if we deny that claim, and on 20250039, that we approve that claim.
Okay. We have a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then on this release of lien, is this paid off or how did this?
Yes, that is a release of lien for a case that has been paid off in full.
Okay. I will sign that. Do I hear a motion on that? I forget.
Sorry.
Oh, hey, Chantel?
Yes.
Can I have that back? The lien, we'll just get a motion on that real quick. I was just signing. We go back and forth, so I move our case 2020020027, that we authorize signature on the release of lien. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Brent?
Good morning, Commissioners. Do you happen to have, Megan Conrad was going to join electronically. We were trying to set that up. I don't know if we had that.
I totally forgot to set that up.
That's okay. We'll just proceed without her. She's probably sitting there wondering what's going on.
She'll fit right in.
And let her know it's not set up, and we'll just proceed without her. It was more of a...
Formality.
Formality. It's not that big of a deal.
I was gonna say, or I could just get her on the phone.
It's all right. We'll be fine.
We'll be all right. Brent can handle it.
I can handle it. So, wanted to come to the Commissioners this morning and talk about a proposed new urban renewal area in the South Fifth Corridor. And so, part of state statute requires us to bring this to the Commissioners because a portion of this proposed urban renewal area is located in the county. It's within the city's area of impact, but it is in county and not in city. And so, what I have before you is a resolution and a eligibility study report to show you kind of what we're thinking, the area that we're looking at for this new urban renewal area. And then, what we are asking is that you accept this eligibility report so we can proceed to the next step in doing the feasibility of this new urban renewal area. And so, part of this study is, if you wanted, I don't know if you have the packet in front of you, but some of the things that were found based in state statute in this area that qualify it for an urban renewal area as deteriorating, there is predominance of defective or inadequate street layout, and there's diversity of ownership, there's some obsolete plating, and also, there's some other issues with topography, and I talked about the lot layout. And those are some of the findings in this report that meet the qualifications of an urban renewal area based on state statute. Part of this process, this is the first step, is to present this eligibility report showing that it is eligible for a new urban renewal area. The next step would then be to complete a feasibility study that we'd bring back to you, and then, we would then go through a resolution process to adopt a new urban renewal area. And so, this is kind of just that preliminary to take that next step forward. What we envision seeing happening in this area would be improvements to public infrastructure, sewer, water, streets, sidewalks, things of that nature that really lack in that South Fifth Corridor. I've talked with a few of the property owners, and specifically, the Castlemides down on the far end of this area, they're very excited about the potential of this new urban renewal area and what it could do for development of their properties. And so, we have to go through a process of talking with all of the open land owners and getting, having an ag exemption signature from them, that they can, those large parcel owners that have an ag designation have the opportunity to exempt themselves from this urban renewal area if they would like. So, we're working through that process of trying to identify all of those property owners and see if they're interested in being exempted or if they want to be included into the urban renewal area. But, that's kind of for the next step. What I would need from you today is just an approval of this report so we can move forward with the next steps. And if you have questions for me, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. But, it kind of just follows that South Fifth Corridor, and there's a map of the district on, let's see, the best one. If you look on page five of the report, it kind of shows where that proposed urban renewal area would be. Now, at this stage, it's a larger area. We can always make it smaller, but we can't enlarge it as we move forward through this process. And so, that's why we kind of took a larger chomp at this, so we can always shrink it down as we talk with property owners, whether or not they want to be included or not, and shrink it down. But, it goes essentially from the river up to where the foothills really start to climb on the east, and then from the gap up to about, if I remember right, it's... Yeah, it's up to, just before you get to the interchange. So, drawing a blank on the road there, Barton Road. Barton Road. So, that's kind of the bound of the area. You have any questions for me regarding this proposal or TIF districts in general? Any questions or concerns? I'm happy to answer. Any questions?
Well, the city just annexed quite a bit of this property into the city. How come we didn't go on down to where we're doing the end of this urban renewal?
Partly because it wasn't annexable based on the state statute. It wasn't enclaved. If you look at a lot of that area that was further south, it wasn't eligible for annexation unless the property owners wanted to be annexed. If it was a category A, we could have annexed them. But, a lot of this property wasn't eligible for us to annex at that time.
Because Century High School and Western States is in the county still?
No, those are in the city.
Okay. I'm looking at this map. It kind of looks like it was still.
So, there's...
I thought the annexation ended at Castlemides Road.
That's where...
That's the little jog in here.
Yeah, so there's some of it, the annexation ended at Castlemides Road, but there's portions like the high school and the cat facility, those are in the city already, and they came up from the other direction. And so, the city boundary and the county boundary through this whole area is a jumbly mess. And that's part of what we're trying to clean up as well. And I know some of the property owners down on that farther south and are interested in the, in annexation as well.
I'm just looking at the map on page 54, and it kind of...
On page 54?
Yeah. That's what it is on my computer, anyway.
Yeah, I don't think that's what it is on mine, but...
But, it's got the county property and the city property.
Yeah. Let's see which one you're looking at.
Be the last page in the packet, probably.
Oh, that one. Yes, that one is, I don't think I have.
I think that one is the boundary that we created.
Yeah, it's the boundary. Just a... Yes.
It says parcel boundaries on it, too.
Yeah, I don't think I have that one on my packet.
I'm just looking at it. I've seen where the county properties were, how it affected the county.
Yeah, so, that one isn't part of the report. We created that one just for you guys to kind of get an idea of what is in the county within that proposed urban renewal area and what's in the city. And it is kind of a hodgepodge of jurisdiction through there. And the hope is, over time, that that will get cleaned up as properties develop.
Well, I have no problem of looking into it further. I mean, that's what this purpose is. It's not approving everything, but it's...
Right. It's just taking the next steps.
So, what's your barriers to annexation? Particular property owners that do not want to be, or they just don't meet, there's no improvements that are going to be included to them?
That's a good question. There's a number of things that do come up. One, they have to be contiguous, and two, unless they're totally enclave, they have to want to be annexed. Or, three, if they want to develop, then the current practice is the county will push that development to the city if they're eligible for annexation, to be developed in the city rather than in the county. But, it's kind of a fine line because if they're one, not contiguous, like for instance, there's a new contractor facility that's being built down on the south end of South Fifth, and it's not contiguous with the city. So, they couldn't be annexed. It's not eligible for annexation. And so, they were, they're developing that property in the county because it cannot be annexed based on state statute. Now, if it was one lot further north, it would have been contiguous with the city, and we would have required them to annex at the time of development.
So, do you have some particular parcel owners that are just absolutely not interested at all in that fly mix in there?
I think there's probably a couple. I don't know that I have a pulse on any that are like absolutely against it. I think there's a few that don't want to until they want to, if that makes sense. There are a number of property owners that are very interested in annexation down there, and they're just waiting for the development opportunity before they will proceed with annexation. For instance, we have a developer looking at doing some development around where the seminary building is across from the high school, and they've been talking with the city about annexation and development of that property because they want to do some residential, high-density residential and commercial development along through there. And so, they would be annexed prior to any type of development that would occur. And that's the important thing about working together with the county, working with Hal, that as those developers come into the county for development, that they are then sent to us for annexation at that time, if they're eligible for annexation. And that's usually the trigger, is that somebody wants to develop or improve their property.
Which, to me, that development is eventually going to want to and should be probably developed. And my problem of it is, we're crossing boundaries with fire protection, police protection, and everything else. It looks to me like, if at all possible, I think we need to really push that avenue to... To me, annexation is probably a greater thing to me than an urban renewal, just because cleaning up some of the, what you were just talking about, you just can't provide the same services as if you can with everybody else. I have no problem with studying it, but I'd really love to see what the obstacles and try to overcome, because especially with the comprehensive plan now, with the area of impact, now would be a good time to clean up that annexation, clean up the services provided for there, the infrastructure, all of that. That's just my two bits worth.
No, and I totally agree with you, Ken. And I think what the urban renewal will help with is it will help promote development, which will then in turn help promote the annexations to occur. And most people, with state statute, I'm very restricted as to how I can force annex. And so, a lot of that property on the south side, the south end of that Fifth South Corridor, isn't eligible for a forced annexation. It's only eligible for annexation if the property owner wants to do it. And if they want to develop it and have the services that need to be provided to that development, then we would require annexation at that time. And so, I think the key is that as developers come to you to develop on county parcels, if it's eligible for annexation, you need to make sure that they come to the city to get annexed before you approve development of those properties and have it go through the city. I think that's an important role that you guys will be playing as a county to help with that. And we, as a city, would then do our part, annex the parcels that might be enclaved, and we can look at those parcels. And if they're totally enclave, then we can annex them and force annex them. But, at this point, we're looking more at trying to encourage the annexation as that development occurs, because people want to stay in the county until, at that point. Now, the urban renewal is kind of a separate issue. Annexation is on one side, and I think it's a very important thing, but this urban renewal is a separate issue where it's not the city's thing. This is the Pocatello Development Authority's district, and they work with the city and they work with the county in establishing these TIF districts. But, the intent is to improve infrastructure, improve the public realm, so development is more likely to occur in these areas. And so, we can see the tax base increase and have it developed out.
Makes sense? Yes and no. I mean, I totally understand, but if you're looking 10 years down the road and looking back, I just don't want to see either developers or individual property owners take a bunch, drill a bunch of wells, or put in a septic system when down the road they should be...
Absolutely.
They should be into a community type stuff. So, I agree with all of the authorities, but I think we have got to be forward-thinking and do everything we can to encourage the best possible solution 10 years down the road, which I think is annexation.
Yeah, and I think we're on the same page there.
And I think that the urban renewal area helps pave the way for that annexation because it builds the infrastructure, or provides the ability to build the infrastructure you're talking about, which then leads to the annexation.
Which probably would help our planning and zoning, at least with that guidance and direction, to make sure that we're not going to backtrack from that.
And I talked to Hal about this, and he thinks it fits very nicely with our comprehensive plan and their comprehensive plan. It's a good puzzle piece.
I think we're actually in line pretty well with a lot of things, and I really do appreciate the working relationship that I have with the county and with both my PDA hat and my Planning Director hat for the city. It's been a very good working relationship, and I appreciate that.
All right. Any further discussion, comments, or questions?
No.
Okay. We have Resolution 2025-45, which is accepting the study and authorizing to go to the next step, next step forward. Is there any motion on that?
I'll make the motion, but I don't have the number.
Just...
You've got his number and my motion, but we'll go ahead and decide that resolution.
All right. So, I have a motion on Resolution 2025-45 to approve it. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thanks, Brent.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Chief? And as he's coming up, we'll need to switch hats.
Make a motion to go into Board of Ambulance.
I have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Chief.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ryan O'Hearn, Bennett County Ambulance District and Pocatello Fire. I've got two items before you this morning. The first is a fee waiver request for ambulance standby. This is to support the Marsh Valley...
Right here behind you.
Excuse me? This is a, go ahead.
I'm Connie Lynn. I'm the secretary for the Marsh Valley Pioneer Day Rodeo Committee.
So, they do the Marsh Valley Pioneer Days rodeo every year. It's a big event in South County, and our volunteers in South County staff the ambulance annually. It's a combination of providers from all of our units, Incom, Downey, and Lava. It's on July 11th and 12th. Is it just two days then?
It's just two days. We have three performances Friday night, 7:00. We start with the mud and busting and the kids' game, and rodeo starts at 7:30. Same thing on Saturday night, and then Saturday morning at 8:00, we have slack.
It does amount to about 12 hours of standby, which if we were to bill them the full amount would be just over $2,000. We have been able to accomplish the standby with our volunteer staff in years past, and so, she's asking for a fee waiver this year to do that again.
Yeah, just being able to use the volunteers again?
Yes. We've already engaged with them, and they're planning on doing that, and the units will still be in service. We'll take an additional unit down there to be at the rodeo, so it won't affect response in South County.
And will it be Lava again covering primarily?
Primarily Lava, yeah.
Because in this notice, it says, because of the new ambulance in Downey or in McCannan?
Yeah.
I didn't know if that was in service yet or not.
It's not. So, just in this request. And then, the other thing that I had on that is you said that your husband would be there with his jump bag?
Yes. Man.
Who is an EMT. Where's an EMT at?
Downey.
Okay, okay. So, it is part of our, I didn't want somebody outside our organization.
Yeah, and I don't...
He hasn't ran with the Downey. We have recently moved up to Incom, and with his schedule at Simplot, he hasn't quite figured out if it's going to work out to become a volunteer at the Incom community, but he is still current on all of the license.
And that's all I wanted to make sure is, the EMTs running the ambulance are certified under your direction.
Correct.
We don't get volunteers coming off...
He's not affiliated with our agency, so...
That are not our volunteers.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, I'm hoping for that. No.
I'd go ahead and make a motion that we approve the waiver for the Marsh Valley Pioneer Days rodeo.
We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Good luck.
Thank you, guys.
And the second item I have is a professional services agreement with a company called Public Consulting Group, PCG. Over the past few years, they've helped stand up the GEMT, which stands for Ground Emergency Medical Transportation Program. This is a supplemental payment program through Medicaid that's, I mentioned it briefly during my presentation last week. It's to help agencies bridge the gap between what Medicaid reimburses for a transport and the cost of providing that service. They recognize that agencies are not made whole and that there's a gap. This program aims to help bridge that gap somewhat. I do have a revenue estimate, if you would like to look at it, that PCG provided for us that kind of might help give you a better idea of the metric and some of the things that go into it. This cost recovery will go back to fiscal year '23 because that's when the plan was originally submitted and the program established in Idaho. And so, in August, we will do cost recovery for a portion of FY '23 and all of FY '24, and then moving forward, next spring, we will submit for FY '25, and then we'll submit annually in the spring for the previous fiscal year. There is a fee for this. It is tiered, looking back for FY '23 and '24. It's a 15% charge of the amount reimbursed, for example, you know, so for example, if we were to receive $100,000 from this program for FY '23, 15% of that would be their fee. They do give a discount of 10% for agencies that are members of the Idaho Fire Chiefs Association, and so that would be 13 and 1/2, respectively. And then, moving forward for FY '25, the fee is 12%, and then subsequent years, moving forward, it's 10%. And then, you would add on that, that 15% discount, or excuse me, the 1 and 1/2% discount.
What's the turnaround time on getting the money? Do they have any idea?
I don't know. I think it's fairly quick. The number 60 days sticks in my mind, but I'm not, I will try to find out what the turnaround is.
One thing we're going to need to do is add to the budget. If the Commission approves this, we'll need to add in the payment amount that we'll need to reimburse this entity because that's not included in the budget. So, I just, that's why I was wondering about the turnaround time, if I needed a budget for both, well, FY '23, '24, and '25 for '26, so.
So, would you just use the numbers they gave us in here as your projection for the amount?
Yeah.
I thought you didn't give a projection.
It's internal. I'll project for us every day.
Earlier discussion.
So, these are monies that we're currently missing out on, and they only get paid if they recoup some of those monies that we are currently missing out on. Correct. There is a, in the contract, they have a $5,000 minimum, but because of our call volume, our Medicaid payer mix, we are anticipating somewhere in the neighborhood of, the conservative estimate that they provided us was $90,000, and the normal estimate was about $120,000. And so, we're estimating revenues annually in that range. Once we complete the cost recovery packet and actually engage them in helping us prepare that, we'll know exactly what that amount is. But, these were just estimates that they submitted us.
And this is a three-year contract?
Yeah.
About to reach 2028?
Yes, and that accounts for five years of revenue recovery, looking back to FY '23.
Okay.
Seems like a reasonable idea to me.
So what strong-armed tactics, tactics do they use that we don't?
Well, this is a new program for us, and, and so this is, uh, helping us navigate this program with Medicaid. And so this is dealing directly with Medicaid. It's one cost recovery packet. This isn't, uh, going back on any of the, the clients or the patients that we transport. And so we feel like they're well-positioned to help us navigate these waters and submit this.
So is the client pretty well Medicaid?
Yes, yes.
I mean, we're not dealing with individuals out there.
No, we would be dealing with CMS.
Their accounting system.
Correct.
And theirs, which there's probably lots of room to maneuver that, so, okay. That's what I was concerned about is, we're only dealing with Medicaid, we're not dealing with trying to deal into indigen fund, you know, everything else. It's just what's inside their system that we feel like they owe us that they haven't paid us.
Yeah, this is a federal program through CMS.
Anything from you?
No.
I'm good. Okay.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we go ahead and enter the contracted services agreement with whoever the PGCG, on behalf of the Board of Ambulance with the City of Pocatello.
All right, we have a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, Christmas. I'd go ahead and make a motion or go back into the Board of Commissioners.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Shanda.
Good morning, Commissioners, Shanda Crystal, Chief Procurement Officer. I have one item before the board today, and that is to discuss change orders with Headwaters for the YDC Event Center building construction. Um, there are a couple here that we've gathered up over the next little, past little bit, and we'll just go through and review them with the board. The first one is change order number three. Um, this change was basic to change the storefront windows to a hollow metal frame. That did increase the value just a little bit at $666,061. Any questions about the storefronts? The next change order that I have listed is change order number five, um, and that it was for the new gas line that was put in. That change order comes to a total of $3,027.99. Any questions on the gas line?
How come we never get a change order where we get money back?
Ooh, that is the last one. I'm excited today.
Okay.
We do have a deduct one this time.
On that first one for the windows?
First one.
Did you say 6,000?
No, 600.
Okay, all right. I thought I heard 6,000.
Sorry.
It wasn't jiving.
Okay. I apologize if I misspoke, it is $666.61. Uh, moving on to change order number six, uh, that was some revisions we made to the door locks in the facility. That comes to a total of $954.54. Any questions on that one? Change order number seven is to, uh, pay for Excel engineering, soil and materials testing. That one comes to the total of $4,745.69. Change order number eight is adjustments to the access control hardware in the building for safety purposes. That one comes to a total of $9,982.13. And Commissioner Bullock totally killed my favorite part of change order number nine. But that is a deduct, this is coming back to the county. Uh, we did originally anticipate having difficulties, excuse me, with the water line, uh, potentially crossing the sewer line as we got down into that, but as we actually dug down into them, they did not cross paths. So this is money coming back to the county, uh, as a change order in the amount of $13,850. All six change orders before the board today come to a value of $5,526.96. And we do have room in, um, contingency that has been allocated in, in the contract to pay these, if approved.
Questions?
I like more of the last one.
You too.
At least we got a little bit back, so it wasn't as painful.
About even now. Some you've identified this is coming out of the regular funds that we set for change order.
Yep. Yes.
I'll make the motion that we go ahead and authorize these change orders as presented.
We have a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I just wanted to follow up with, we had a meeting with Headwaters last week, and, um, the biggest unknown at this point is the demo of the old building and then putting the parking lot in, like what's going to be under that ground. Um, they don't foresee any other change orders as far as, like, we are taping, texturing, painting part of the facility, so we are really getting down, um, to the last little bit of detail that we've got there. Uh, they don't see, foresee any other change orders in regards to that, um, but that demo of the building is our biggest unknown that we have right now. Um, and right now, with these approved change orders, we have utilized about 33% of that, um, approved contingency that we have. So there is a little bit of space, but we don't know what we don't know until we get into that. Um, that should be like the middle to late August, when we demo that building and, and dig into that ground, and I'll know better at that time if there's any, um, more surprise.
So did you talk to them about that date in August that we're looking at?
Correct. Um, they are a little nervous, uh, if it moves any further than that week of the 18th. Um, but I said, nope, we would gather up whoever we needed to and get them moved. Um, I double-checked with, uh, Emma, and right, there's no other concerts and, for a couple weeks, um, so we should be able to utilize and get them all moved over. Um, right, connectivity, uh, IT is going to be a big piece of that, um, getting them, having that the shortest downtime we possibly can to get them moved over and up and running again, um, so they can continue doing what they do best. They confirmed that that week, um, won't cause a delay. If we move beyond that, um, they do have concerts.
They was wanting to go a week earlier, and there's three concerts that week, and we just, there's no way Scott's group could be.
Yeah, they have two the previous week and three that week, so.
Yep, so we should be on track.
So talking about moving and stuff, we've talked about furniture.
Yes.
What, what have we identified in funds, one way or another, or what?
So we haven't identified any because I don't have an estimate back yet, uh, but that is, so we're using the same company that the YDC is using, um, and they have, uh, the Event Center approved, uh, furniture list for me, and that will go over to the contractor today to get an estimate back over, um, so we can look and, um, I'm hoping that to be back before the board on Tuesday, um, with that furniture list and a dollar.
If we're setting a, a date of moving, that's pretty important, because we don't want to move the old stuff over and then change it back out a week or two later, so.
And I did double-check about the lead time for the furniture, and she says about two weeks. So we do have just a little bit of breathing room, but I do want to get on it because there's quite a bit. Um, and there are some things that are, uh, unique, uh, storage needs, things like that, um, that they haven't quite identified. We are moving forward with 90% of the furniture, and we'll kind of work out those few things. They just haven't had time, right? They have a concert.
Tomorrow.
Okay. Um, so they haven't had time to sit down and really identify, and they don't want to get something that's not going to fit their individual needs for their jobs that they have. But we do have 95% of that furniture identified, it'll go to the contractor today, um, and she's been pretty quick, uh, maybe two days before I have that.
And as we review this furniture, it's individual needs, not wants?
Not wants, right? Job required.
So we're on the same page here.
Yes, yes, job required. Uh, Terry was just running through a couple of the different types of things that they store in, um, right? And it's different from, uh, you know, the assistant facilities director is going to be very different from the concert people, so, but yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Kristy.
Mr. Closser, comptroller, I just have a request for the board, where you guys are going to be gone on July 10th through the 18th. That's going to encompass a concert on two Saturdays. They'll be able to buy alcohol that first Saturday, but will need to replenish the alcohol for the following concert. So I have a request of the board to allow our office to process a check, well, two checks actually, because we use two vendors, uh, to replenish that alcohol. They usually spend about $10,000, um, for each concert. You never know, so I'm requesting, um, the authorization to process two checks for up to possibly $15,000. And then what I can do, because you will be at conference, I'll email the three board members, let you know of the check and mail. We could do a verbal approval, and then we could use that to come back and ratify the check that we, the checks that we cut upon your return. The other two items that we will be processing is Blue Cross, um, they automatically take payments out of our account on Thursdays, so we'll have the 10th and the 17th, but they'll take payments out. Uh, we can ratify those as well when you get back on the following Tuesday, if that's okay.
Thank, thank you for thinking ahead.
Getting us out of trouble. So I assume just, if you send us an email, our return email will be, will authorize those and then ratify them?
Yes, so.
So as long as somebody's tracking that, we can send that out, we can print those, do whatever it is, and then ratify them.
So it'll be kind of a similar process that we do for manual checks.
Yeah.
For manual checks, usually I try and get signatures. In the past, we've had a situation where I couldn't get all three, so we would do a, a verbal or an email or a text.
An email protects you and everyone else because you have something you could track with.
Yeah, and then we'll just do, um, like I said, the following Tuesday, we'll just send our agenda down, have the emails and all of that.
That would be a legal question. I, I'm assuming since we're talking about it now, and probably approving it now, that you can send one email to the commission as a whole, and then we can respond together that way, and it, it doesn't violate.
I, I think so, because it's a decision that you're making right now. We've done it that way in the past, but we can double-check with John.
Well, I think if we make the decision now to authorize that, it'd authorize us to respond by an email.
Nancy, what do you think of that?
I think so, with the paper trail.
Okay, just protects it, so.
I mean, I could, I could do three separate ones as well, but I think ultimately, I don't even know if I would need to get the money, um, at the time, because you're preapproving it.
Right.
If you preapproved it up to a dollar amount, that could be enough. I just, for transparency purposes, want you guys to know what we're writing the checks for.
Yeah, no. Well, then I would move that we authorize Kristy to do that and notify us via email and accept our email response as authorization and forward. Any further discussion on that?
To be ratified.
Yeah, to be ratified when we return. Yeah, thank you for that. How's that?
It's good.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Matthew.
I'm going to go for executive session, because this one will require executive session.
I'd make a motion that we go into executive.